Yeah, seriously.
At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone here this evening. We do have an agenda before us. Are there any corrections or changes or additions or deletions to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be consider the approval of the minutes of the meetings that were held on June 24th. The council does have those minutes. Are there any corrections to note?
I move approval.
Motion by Amanda.
Second.
Seconded by John to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. Close the voting. The motion does pass. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the consent agenda on the screen, and they include introduction of an ordinance amending the definitions to address sober houses, the introduction of the ordinance amending the outside storage to clarify commercial display in sales lots requirements, introduction of the ordinance amending the update to the billboard requirements, consider the approval to allow alcoholic beverages at the Marshall Aquatics Center for adult night, or the approval to declare eats and beats on Third Street as a community festival, consider a temporary extension of a alcohol license area for crazy days, consider the authorization to declare bicycles as surplus property for the Marshall Police Department, the grant agreement from the Southwest Health and Human Services for the opioid settlement funding, vacation of a right-of-way on Paul Streets, subdivision of Outlaws Four and Five, country club addition, and receive the petition for the vacation and call for the public hearing, consider the approval of the data practices policy, and then finally, consider the approval of the bills and project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for separate discussion?
Move approval.
Motion by Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by C. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. So that brings us then to Agenda Item Number 11, Consider the Request of the Shades of the Past Car Club for June 5, 2026, which is a Friday, for the cruise, and June 6, 2026, which is Saturday, for the car show. Stephen, do you have this? Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. So the city's received the request for the Shades of the Past Car Show included in the packet for the closures of Susan Drive and Baseline Road, pretty much in accordance with what they've been doing for the last few years at last year's event this past June. Prior to that, the council had considered their request and had received some concerns from businesses, so the council asked them to consider the location and make sure that the event still fits in this space. So it's my understanding that after this year's event, those concerns have been addressed, and they are asking now for council consideration to host the event in the same location. They want to do it early, even though this is for next June, just to make sure they have certainty of location and that they can advertise their event and be certain that they can have it. So that's the request in front of us. If there's any questions for me, I can try to help address them.
Thank you. And Sharon, your council member, Shaffer, can also met with the group, and my understanding is that there has been very good communication between the organization and the area businesses.
Yeah, and it's, they did an outreach with the assistance of Sharon and met with one of the most concerned businesses there, and not only did it alleviate the concerns, they did an excellent job of addressing those concerns during the recent show, and that businesses actually expressed serious interest in sponsoring the cruise next, on Friday night of next year. The club has really wanted to get at it early because this coming will be their 40th anniversary of the cruise. It won't be the 40th cruise. There's a few years that it missed, but it's their 40th anniversary, so they want to do it up big, so they really wanted to lock in the site and be able to advertise. So I think they did a really, really good job of taking care of any issues. It went off very well.
Does the council have any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion on the recommendation or the request.
I move approval.
A second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Agenda Item Number 14, Memorandum of Understanding for the Maintenance of Camden Regional Trail between Lyon County, City of Marshall, City of Lind, and Camden State Park under the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. So we have a number of people that are here to address this. Jason, are you going to start this? I'll introduce Jason Anderson, City Engineer and Director of Public Works.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this MOU is just to establish an agreement amongst all the parties that are in cooperation for the Camden Regional Trail, including Lyon County, City of Marshall, City of Lind, and the Camden State Park. I think, it's my understanding that this agreement helps create certainty with the trail and helps maybe the county and other entities access different pieces of funding to help fund future improvements in this trail. I think the key for the City of Marshall with this agreement is that we're responsible for the trail as it lies within our city limits, and that includes capital maintenance and as well as snow removal, street sweeping, cleaning, just general maintenance in operation. Any party can get out of this agreement with 90 days' written notice. This is an agreement that has been generally prepared by the SRDC and reviewed by engineering staff as well as our city attorney, and I believe Preston's looked at it as well for the parks. So from our perspective, we think it's a good agreement to enter into. I know Chris Webb with the SRDC is here as well, if you have questions for him.
So yeah, with us tonight is Chris Webb from the Planner with the Regional Development Commission. Do you have any comments you want to make at this time? And if so, we'll have to use the microphone. Chris has been coordinating a lot of the communication between the entities.
Yeah, so I'm a planner with Southwest Regional Development Commission. Lyon County has contracted with the SRDC to rewrite their master plan for the Camden Regional Trail, and the county is seeking regional designation from the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission. And so there are several requirements that the county has to attain in order to apply for this designation, and acquiring an MOU that is signed by all parties is one of the requirements that they are obligated to follow to go through this process.
Well, and I think the, I think we all know the Camden Regional Trail is really an asset for this region. It's well-used. It's, Preston, you probably have the counter numbers, but there's thousands of bikers that every week use that between Marshall and Camden State Park and back, and it's really a gem of a trail, so. Good. If not, you have the request to, for the Memorandum of Understanding, and the main thing this really does is clarify who maintains it. So county does their portion, city does their portion, the DNR does their portion, which is within the Camden State Park.
I'll make motion.
Motion by C.
Second.
Seconded by John to approve the Memorandum of Understanding. Discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion passes. Agenda Item Number 15 is the Adult Community Center Annual Update. With us tonight is Katie from the Adult Community Center, Marshall Senior Center. Katie?
He's much taller than me here. All right, I'm going to hand these out. You can take one of each.
There is a button that you can raise and lower.
Oh, how's that? All right, so, good evening. I'm Katie. I'm the coordinator at the Adult Community Center, just here to do my annual report, give you guys some updates on what we've been up to in the last 12 months. So you can see, we have myself, Jasmine is my direct supervisor. We recently hired Jill Tuft as our program specialist. She began back in May, so she's been with us a little over a month, and she's been doing really well. Of course, we have any event staff that fill in. We have a couple of people that fill in as needed, a couple seniors that fill in when we need help with events or specific hours for coverage, and then all the support staff through the City Hall, the maintenance, the custodians, the accounting, all those departments. And just to reiterate, part of the Marshall Adult Community Center is because of the Marshall Area Senior Citizens, that group that became incorporated in the 1960s. Their membership varies right now between 450 to 500 members, depending on who joins, who is deceased. They have their own 12-seat board, and they sponsor that monthly newsletter that you just received. Their mission is to serve members 55 and older, so they're the primary group that comes in and uses the center on a Monday-through-Friday daily basis. Also in the building is senior dining. Senior Dining, Meals on Wheels, most people know it as, they have an onsite dining option, and then they deliver out in the community to, they use staff and volunteers to deliver meals to people who, I guess, reserve them, through them. Back in October, LSS went through a big format change, and so that's impacted the dining service. They had, I think, 14 cooking sites in the southwest region of the state, and due to their funding, they changed that down to four sites, so they no longer cook on our site, but what they do is they cook the meals in Laverne, deliver them weekly as individual frozen meals, and then they reheat them daily based on the designated numbers that they need. So you can see, some of our attendance has dropped down. That's their monthly numbers. The light blue is the home delivery meals per month, and the dark blue is their onsite dining per month. They typically have had a lower onsite dining number, but then that's also dropped. With that, I guess with that reorganization that they did, we went into the kitchen as kind of their landlords, I guess you would say, and we went through and we did a big deep cleaning. We spent probably close to 100 hours between maintenance staff, custodian, ourselves. We went through, and we scrubbed and deep cleaned everything with the goal of consolidating LSS's space that they used because they didn't need as much storage in the hopes of potentially renting out the kitchen for other uses. And then as we've looked at that, we're also looking at what additional onsite dining options we have available. Because the meals come in frozen and are reheated onsite, most people are not interested in eating that in between our morning and afternoon programs, and so we started looking at, we did a bunch of surveys, we did a lot of talking to different organizations, and now currently we're partnered with The Gambler. The Gambler, we give them a meal count on a Monday for every Thursday. Thursdays are our very busy days at the center. People come in the morning, they want a meal option, and then they want to stay in the afternoon and do those afternoon programs. So they, we have volunteers that will go over and pick up a set number of meals, bring them over to us, and then the group still has that opportunity to stay onsite and Projects in the last year. So we went into the kitchen, I should kind of show you some of that. We replaced some fridge seals, a garbage disposal. You can read that column on the left there is projects that we have done or are in progress. So we just consolidated LSS's space. They had a whole office area, and we redid some rooms to make it so that all of their stuff can be locked up if we have additional rentals in the kitchen area. We've done some patching of some growage, replacementing blinds, updated the copper foam lines, which I didn't know was a thing, but they told me, so we got that done. And right now, we're currently working on installing a kitchenette into our dining room. That would make it a more accessible and functional space for renters, and we have an electrician helping with our exterior lights so that those come on automatically when, based on a timer, I guess, when it gets dark out. And we're doing some, we moved our thermostats into a more central location because we really have kind of a temperature problem in the facility where it's getting better, slow and steady, but moved it to a space where it wouldn't constantly run. And then we are working on installing some outdoor cameras. We had a break-in a few months ago. We had somebody come into one of our windows and break in and just grab, I don't know if you'd call that a petty theft, I don't know what it is, the technical name, but, so we're working on that. Upcoming projects that we're looking at, we do need to start looking at replacing some windows. We have a volunteer that is going to be working on building us like a little free library or a little market area that we can have. We have some steps that we'd like to split from one nine-inch step into two smaller four-inch steps as one of our main exits. We need to do some work on the grease trap in our dishroom and maybe some regrading around the building. That's all stuff that we're looking at potentially in the next year. We use volunteers a lot. These are some of the projects volunteers have helped with over the last year. They've built some patio benches. We threw a donation through the American Legion Tables Planters, did some painting, and just in general, they help, a lot of the volunteers help out with different programs and events and kind of get out in the community. That's our biggest way that we spread our, spread our opportunities is through community relations. Here's some of the grants and sponsorships we've received in the last 12 months. Blue Cross Blue Shield has sponsored a couple of different events. We do a cellphone recycling program, so people can bring their old, used cellphones and small devices, and we send those in through the National Council on Aging, and then we get some very small reimbursement from that, but it's something. SWIFT, we received a large grant from SWIFT last year, $25,000, and that all went towards programming and just doing a lot of additional things that, trying to draw more seniors in. Their goal was, you have all these seniors who got really scared during COVID, and they're still all coming back out, so how do we encourage them to come back out? We've had donations from QuickTrip, Thriving Action Teams, and Vanderhagen and Skogren Associates. This is just the same list that you see in your summer, the community ed brochure of all of the different activities that we have on a daily, weekly, or monthly basis. We truly try to say there's something for everybody. So if we have somebody in the community coming in and they say, what do you have for us? We say, well, come in and we'll just have a conversation with them. And they say, well, I'm a card player, so then we'll give them the information of when we have that, or, oh, I just really like the educational programs. So we have a lone library, slow and steady, we're growing that. So we've had the three-wheeled trikes, and we received iPads on a grant over COVID. They're not checked out much, but we're trying to include them in a little bit more of our programming. And then last year on that big grant from SWIFT, we started these Stay Sharp kits. So it's a kit that community members, if they have a state-issued ID, that they can check out. So similar to like a library backpack that's got it, but we have really, kind of really neat opportunities in there. So like our wellness kit would have sound, like the sound bowls that you can check those out, or the Explore More kit has the geocaching tools in it. Backyard birding has access. We put an iPad in there, access to cameras for a bird, a birdhouse and a bird feeder. And then, of course, books that support that. These are some different community organizations that are using our facility for different classes or meetings. It's about 12 or 13 of them there, I think. So we have, I think, here's the numbers on that, in the last 12 months, just the Adult Community Center, through the City of Marshall, we've offered over 200 individual activities, or 200 different activities, which led to 2,000 individual events. So if we have pepper on Mondays, and we do it every Monday when we're open, maybe that is 50-some events, but we had 200 different activities. So that list that I handed out is some of the bigger activities that we've had. Of our special events, we had about 4,500 hours of attendance during those, and the routine events, which is things like our wellness programs and our afternoon activities, there's 22,000 hours of attendance. Of that, there's over 500 individual, unduplicated participants, and the check-in numbers of those participants are 1,500, 100, 15,142, excuse me. So that is if I came in the morning on Monday and then Thursday and then Friday, that's three different check-ins. There's our information about our reservations, 350 different events, so that includes that last slide with those different monthly meetings, the quilt clubs and the stamp clubs and all that, but over 1,000 hours. And then we have 21 different organizations that have rented, 17 private rentals in the last 12 months. And that's what I have today. Anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you, Katie. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is the Agenda Item Number 16, Consider the Approval of the Special Logs, Extending the Authority of the City of Marshall to Use Transferred Increment until December 31, 2027. Sharon? Sharon Hanson, City Administrator.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, most of you are aware, we did get special legislation in the tax bill through the special session of the legislature this past year, which allowed us to extend unobligated TIF. This was a special provision passed by the legislature in 2021. It would have expired on the use at the end of this year due to our housing development, which was the initial purpose of the unobligated TIF for the City of Marshall. We weren't able to spend that. That was advocated to the legislature. The mayor and our EDA director testified, and we were successful in getting it in the tax bill. Part of that requirement, to make sure that it is legal in law and statute, is to follow the remaining requirement, which is to have the city council adopt this resolution. It then is given to the Secretary of State by our city clerk. We did have our city attorney review, and we also had our bonding consultant who worked with us on our sales tax resolution help us draft this, and the city clerk will carry it forward if approved. So we recommend approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions about this resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. One final thing I'd add on that, we did have good support from our local legislators as we're working with the legislature. So both Representatives Swudzinski and Senator Dames were very supportive, and in fact, introduced us when we did the testimony. We'll move then to the introduction of the ordinance amending the public sites and open spaces. With that, do you have this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
City Attorney Pam Whitmore.
Mr. Mayor, Council, City Administrator, and I will be tag teaming on this one. So I believe that there's been a PowerPoint that's been prepared, but just to give a little bit of background, we've been talking about this, staff has been talking about this for probably almost a year and a half, I would say, in working with the park dedication and park dedication fees. There was a case that changed the landscape of park dedication fees in 2022, and so that's what triggered some of this discussion and reviewing our city code, which provided, so when properties are subdivided or where there's a development that involves subdivisions, there is allowed in statute dedication of open space by the developer in planning those developments or the subdivision, or in lieu of that, there can be a park dedication fee. And previously, or in existence now in our code, that park dedication fee was a recommendation from staff to council and really based on our fee schedule. And so in 2022, there was a lawsuit that involved the City of Burnsville and an individual who developed a residential property into commercial property and was assessed a dedication fee that was based on a fee schedule, based on a percentage, and that was challenged. And ultimately, that went all the way up to our Minnesota Supreme Court, and what they said was, park dedication fees are valid, but they have to have some kind of essential nexus, which means a connection between the fee or the fee amount and the municipal purpose for that fee, what it's, and it's used in, it's kept in a special fund and used for things that our park or open spaces set forth in either a parks plan or a comp plan. So you've heard City Administrator talk a lot about the parks plan, and that's one of the reasons why. And then also that there's a rough proportionality of analysis done, so that there's some individual analysis done based on the proposal, and that it was considered just the different fact scenarios. So with that, I will turn it over to City Administrator.
Okay. Keep it on that slide, just for a moment. I want to follow up on just a few points that our city attorney made. Really, just to kind of simplify a little bit, we think that if there's growth in either housing or business development, we're going to have more people, and that means more demand on our park and trails. So we want to offset some of those costs with a fee, and some of that obviously would help, maybe help our levy and offset that. It also means that those who are benefiting from those particular services, such as parks and trails, are kind of paying for it as well, so there is more of a connection with that. And it also ensures future availability of our parks, and I'll get into that a little bit, because we have different things that we're working on and looking at different park and trail needs in the future. So I just wanted to add on that a little bit. We do have a history of this, and I know the mayor may want to add a little bit to this, but our Parkland public sites and open space ordinance was adopted in March of 2009, and even though we don't have a large balance in our Parkland fee, obviously, we're always working towards economic development, growth, and housing development. But I do have up on the screen there the fund balance at the end of 2024, and at some point, we will be accessing those for future park work or development. Our city attorney covered the Supreme Court decision and the legal background recently. We also have had some questions from possibly developers or residents on the Parkland dedication fee since it's been implemented in 2009. So in 2024, city staff, and that included our Public Works Director, Jason Anderson, our city assessor, David Parsons, city attorney and city administrator, and our LNO, who reviewed this on several occasions, to review the ordinance, make sure that it complies with recent court cases and current statute. We did have approval by LNO on May 27 of this past year to adjust this particular ordinance. And then the next slide, please. Yeah, we do want to say too that this is very typical. I know our city attorney works with a number of communities that also have Parkland dedication fees. I could have went on and on and on for cities that do have this, but these are some comparable cities that have a Parkland dedication fee. Next slide. And I think you were going to cover this.
So I think that I covered a lot of it. With that second bullet point is that two-pronged analysis with respect to the nexus for furthering a municipal purpose. Again, just reiterating, that's why it's important in our comp plan, furthering our comp plan in parks and trails and the Parkland, and doing that individualized analysis, which is, the proposed ordinance sets up more process than what's in our current ordinance, so that there is really an analysis, a deeper analysis that's there is really an analysis, a deeper analysis that's done with a recommendation from staff to council on that. And again, this is just talking about if there is a development that it doesn't make sense for the purposes of that specific development to incorporate an actual park or green space than to be able to have this fee in lieu to put into a fund so that we can further our whole citywide trail and open space system.
Yeah, and if we did update our comprehensive plan in December of 2022 in there, it really set the framework, which is required by Minnesota statutes, on why we have a continued development of the city's park and trail system. We also, as most of you are aware, recently adopted or went forward with a master park planning services, which will further solidify the need for Parkland dedication. We do have our current fees, which is adopted annually in our fee schedule. I don't know the last time this has been changed. It's been pretty constant. $500 per lot or 2% of gross unimprovement value per commercial lot. We do have to make sure that statutorily these fees meet the nexus or the connection with the park development, so our comprehensive plan and master park planning will help with that. I will add that when we've done some initial comparisons, we are not above other comparable cities in terms of the level of the fee that is charged. Ready talked about the comprehensive plan, but in that particular plan, it talked about future population growth and why parks may have future strain. In addition, our current parks are seeing some age based on the initial development of our parks, which will validate the need to charge a Parkland dedication fee. And then we've done a tremendous amount of work in trails and continue work on trail development in the city, but as we all know, that that will need future maintenance with the increased use and the age of the particular trail. Other background on this is we did complete an active transportation plan as well that talked about needs for future trails and safety of those trails and connections points within the city. And then maybe not a direct connection to our outdoor parks and trails, but somewhat in terms of the demand on recreation and the need for additional recreation space. Here it highlights indoor, because we did an indoor recreation study, but certainly that can spill out into our outdoor environment as well.
Also, I wanted to add in, if you have a chance to review, the ordinance there is built into it, that wasn't built in there before. If there's a request from a developer or someone who's doing a subdivision to have a reduction of the fee that has been recommended, then there is some due process built in that they can come to the council and request a reduction of that fee. And then the ordinance does a nice job of also laying out the considerations the council consider with respect to the nexus of that fee, and that would include things like number of households or increase in population from the development in the subdivision and some of those more individualized type analysis. But it's laid out nicely in the proposed ordinance for your review. So with that, I have, I'm available for any questions with respect to the actual structure or the process that's set forth in the ordinance?
Okay. Thank you, Pam. Thank you, Sharon, as well as others that have worked on this, including the Legislative Ordinance Committee. I think really what this has done is really provide clarity to our existing policy that's been in place and actually has worked very well since 2009. And the 2009, that was at a time when there was a new subdivision that was being planned, south of Highway 23. There was no park available at that time, and so that was really one of the things that was the driving force behind putting together a policy. So it's good to clarify it at this time. Questions?
Just comments from LNO. LNO fully supports this. I think the biggest issue with it was the way it was, I don't want to say the way it's administered, but it was kind of, people would buy the lots and then they go get a building permit, and at that time, they were notified of the park fee, so it was kind of a shock to them that it wasn't paid. So I think it's being administered in a better fashion now than it was before. Not saying that was wrong or bad, but that was more of the driving force of fixing the ordinance is how it's administered. Am I correct in saying that?
That's correct.
Sharon, so it was never, I don't say it was done wrong, it's just being done better now.
Good. Any other input? If not, you have the recommendation on the introduction of the amended ordinance. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
By Jim, is there a second? Seconded by C. to introduce discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. The motion does pass. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is Agenda Item Number 18. This addresses the salaries and compensation of the mayor and the council persons. This was established by a year ago prior to the election. Our charter does require the city to bring this up every July, so that's what we're doing right now. So open for any discussion or input or acknowledgement. Anything you want to add, Pam?
No.
Okay. Any comments from the council? If there are no comments, I will move us along then to the next agenda item, which is Agenda Item Number 19, Consider Appointments to Various Boards, Commissions, and Authorities. Council did meet in special session earlier this evening, interviewed candidates, applicants for two different boards, and based on those applications and interviews, I would recommend that Tom Melbrook be reappointed to a second term on the Adult Community Center Commission. That term would expire May 31, 2026, and that Amber Kinner Alahakon be appointed to a second term on the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. That term would expire May 31, 2028. I'd offer that as a recommendation to the council and entertain a motion to affirm.
I'll make a motion.
Seconded by C., seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 20, Commission Board of the ASON Reports. Craig?
I have nothing.
Amanda?
Also nothing.
Amanda.
I don't have anything either.
And mine have not met. John?
Nothing.
C.
Mine haven't met.
And Jim?
I have nothing.
We will move then to Councilmember Individual Items. Craig?
Nothing.
Amanda? Amanda? Jim?
You know, I hate to do this all going through without talking, but I actually have nothing tonight.
And C.
Oh, I just wanted to thank Jasmine for putting on a great Fourth of July event for the community.
Very good. Yes. And John?
Looking forward to an update tomorrow on the Aquatics Center and otherwise, nothing.
Very good. Sharon Hanson, C., and I had the opportunity to attend the League of Minnesota Cities meeting, well, City Attorney Whitmore was also there. Again, very good. It was high attendance, in fact, I think the record attendance, over 700. elected officials and city staff were in attendance, so very good conference. It was held in Duluth this year. Next year, it will be held in Rochester. With that, we'll move then to Staff Report. Sharon?
Yeah, I'll just make a quick mention. National Night Out, which I know is not until August, it is Tuesday, August 5. We are going to have a city table there, so just offering out to council, if you want to spend a half an hour or so, it's a good way to connect with the public, and we'll have some resources there as well. So I'll just mention that. I did include as well in the information-only strategic plan update, project work list, which Jason added some things after this went to print, but we'll update that and share that. There's a lot of work going on in the city. It's our busy time, and we're going to enter budget and levies as well, so we'll be coming back towards, to that near the end of August as well. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Just a very quick comment, that listing of the work tasks that are ongoing in all of the departments and the status of everything, that was a very helpful refresher on all of the things that are going on, so very good. Jason?
Very little to report. Just thank everyone for their patience while necessary work happens on our busy highway. Things get a little more chaotic with the rail closure next week on the 14th. So just thank everyone for their continued patience as we navigate these improvements.
That rail closure, Jason, you're talking about the rail crossing here on West Main Street?
Yes, by the courthouse, that rail crossing will be closed on the 14th. Work expected to take two to three weeks, so take note of that.
Any other questions for Jason? Pam?
I just have one update. So as the council had directed us to file the lawsuit against Sheerhold and Associates for Broadmoor Valley when there was a gate closure, that was in violation of our city code. There was two access points, and one had a gate that was installed. And as well, there were statements made that the city code doesn't apply to Broadmoor Valley. So we also brought in action pursuant to the council's direction to have a determination by the judge that, you know, whether the code applies or doesn't apply, so that we can address some of these issues that are arising. In the answer by Mr. Sheerhold's attorney, his attorney made some counterclaims against the city, and as a result of those counterclaims being included in the answer, that triggered the city's insurance coverage. So LMCIT has hired Jason Kabushak with Iverson Reivers to defend the city on that whole matter now, so that will be covered by your insurance, by our insurance coverage for the city. And so I just wanted to update the council with respect to his taking over that case, so if you heard his name, you wouldn't get confused. And there was a hearing that was scheduled for July 16 that has been stipulated just by the parties to be canceled and rescheduled just for Jason to get up to speed on the matter, because he was only assigned, I think, the Friday before, the Fourth of July, I believe, is when the actual assignment happened. And in the interim, Mr. Sheerhold's attorney has made, has indicated that there would be a written stipulation entered, which I know that has been drafted and sent, that the one gate would stay open so that both access points would be open for the duration of when this case is being heard by the court. So I just wanted to make sure that you all knew about that and had an update.
Okay. Thank you, Pam. Any questions for Pam? If not, we'll move then to the remaining items on the agenda this evening. They include the administrative report for the council's review, the Planning Commission minutes from June, as well as the report that was referenced earlier on the status of the major projects in the city, our strategic plan update. Do you want to make comments on that?
Yeah, we adopted a strategic plan last year, and one of the things we want to do is update quarterly. I don't have it pulled up in front of me right now. I guess Stephen is pulling it up, and I don't think I can read it from there, but it kind of relates to the 2025 projects as well. And we've made some really good progress. I think our last update was in April, and we keep making steps towards that, so.
Okay. Questions on the strategic plan update? Then you also have the listing of building permits and the listing of upcoming meetings. So is there any other item that should come before the council at this meeting this evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
All motion.
Motion by Amanda, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by C. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes, we are adjourned.